Regular meeting on Monday, June 12th, two thousand twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are live in the VHS auditorium also via Zoom broadcast. Uh, Ms. Harris, may I have roll call, please?
Here.
Here. Here.
Present.
Yeah.
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris. This time, I would like to ask Mr. Heller to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Not the motion, Ms. Stock, second Reverend Perry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That will start us off with this evening's special presentations and recognition, starting once again with our Samsung Solve for Tomorrow Champions.
Good evening.
President Scott, Vice President Heller, board members, guests tonight.
We are very pleased to bring up our Samsung team one more time to be celebrated. You remember the last time that they were here. You were so kind to give them an opportunity to practice their pitch. They left here as, um, um, not quite finalists. Thank you. See, they're already part of the conversation. Come on up, just come on up. They left here as finalists, they came back as winners, and we thought it would be so exciting for all of us to be able to share or actually have them share with you their escapades after receiving such a recognition um, and what opportunities had opened up for them currently and what's so exciting to think about what is to come. So I turn it over to you all.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. It's really nice to see you guys again. Uh, at the la- the last time we presented at this meeting, we were at a point where we'd been working for about two years on a project to help people with disabilities, assistive living disabilities, um, use electronic devices. At that point, we were national finalists in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow Challenge, and we were about to go to Washington DC to give that same pitch to a panel of judges.
Um, so at the Samsung event in DC, we gave the same pitch we gave about a month ago. And with that pitch, we won the Employee Choice Award and the National Finalist Award, bringing back one hundred ten K for this week. National winner.
While the, um, others were presenting at Samsung, Gabe and I met with Senator Tom Carper, um, so that he could connect us with potential investors, manufacturing partners, and some, uh, help with getting a patent. Um, and we had a very good conversation with him, and he actually seemed very genuine, which was, which was nice. Um, yeah. Uh, we also got to meet with Lisa Blunt Rochester while touring touring the Capitol. Um, it was very cool, too. Unfortunately, we did not get to see Senator Keans, but.
He goes, he goes like, well, I'll see him. So, um, after we came back, it was actually really nice, thanks to the work of the district. We were able to get a fantastic welcome back celebration with a limousine and people cheering us. It was really amazing. And then, um, we were also able to meet a lot of distinguished people who helped give us some advice. So, um, we were able to meet with, um, Dr. Hollidick and, uh, as the Secretary of Education for Delaware. And so we gave him a short presentation, able to meet with him, which was nice. Um, we were also able to meet Dr. Carney. We also gave him a short pitch and had a meeting with him, which is, no, honestly, it's pretty cool just to like meet all of our elected representatives. And we were finally also able to meet with the, uh, CEO of Labware, uh, Mr. Vins, Vance Krishna. And, um, he actually was able to give us a lot of advice on our next steps moving forward. In that third picture, you can see his lawyer, actually, who helped give us some advice on our next steps moving forward.
Um, as for future steps for our project, we are now the, uh, proud co-owners of Engage Assistive Technology LLC. Um, we are currently in the process of getting our product certified, uh, so that we can begin selling it on the marketplace. Um, we are also currently in the process of gaining a trademark and patent for our product.
So in conclusion, we'd like to thank the board, uh, Dr. Kutch and Mr. Rivera. Especially your support, guidance, and enthusiasm really means a lot to us. And, um, it has definitely been instrumental in our success, so thank you so much.
Great. Wow, exciting. We are so excited for you. We can't wait to see what the future brings for each and every one of you. We do appreciate the recognition that you brought us and the school and the district, also the hardware that you brought back, but considering it was only one set of hardware for the school, we wanted to make sure that you yourselves had your very own replica to take with you and and display proudly to remembering, uh, all the experiences you've had here in the Brandywine School District together since kindergarten all the way to graduation day. So let's give them another big round of applause, wish them all the best.
And I, I also wanted to express my gratitude to, uh, to the district superintendent, the, you know, Brandywine High School, uh, administration community for giving these young students the true, uh, recognition as champions that they deserve. A lot of this is typically reserved for sports, um, but I'm so proud to be a part of this district to recognize academics on the same par, uh, as we do with any, you know, sports teams or championships and so forth. So it's fantastic to see, you know, national champions being brought home on the academic front. So thank you to everyone involved. Mr. Rivera, stand up there. Uh, next up, we also have, uh, ninety-one seven WMPH radio station awards.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Hohler. I invite to the stage Mount Pleasant High School's Radio Station Manager, Paul Wishengrad, and Rising Senior Farahana Khan. Every year, students in the radio broadcast pathway at Mount Pleasant High School and WMPH submit audio work in the Delaware Press Association, DPA, High School Communicate Communicators Contest. This year, we had a slate of seven winners and honorable mentions. So we had first place state winners for Delaware in three categories. First was the Radio Prepared Report created by Farahana Khan for Frozen at Mount. Second was for Radio or TV Interview created by Gemma Calabria for GSA. And third was for Radio or TV Newscast created by Brendan Smith for News Brief Number Eight. All students who win first place in the DPAs are automatically entered into the national contest, sponsored by the National Federation of Press Women. Brendan earned honorable mention, and Gemma earned third place in the national contest. Farahana's piece right here won first place nationally. Congratulations. Remember that all of this amazing student program can be heard on our very own ninety-one point seven FM WMPH or right now with WMPH.net. On behalf of the district, I would like to extend our appreciation for Mount CTE Teacher and Radio Station Manager Paul Wishengrad for developing these skills and this passion in our students. Thank you.
Again, another academic national champion, so proud for Brandywine School District and just how the, you know, the radio station has been around since the early seventies and how it's evolved and, you know, really tackling radio journalism, building students' interview skills, um, tackling current events and issues that, um, students can relate to with their peers or that are topics of interest. So, you know, kudos, uh, to Mr. Wishengrad and all of WMPH and, uh, to our national champions. So thank you. Uh, next up, Tally Middle School Teacher, Education Support Professional and Behavioral Health Professional of the Year Recognition.
Good evening, as, uh, Administrative Team Tally joins us on the stage, we would also like to invite up for the final celebration of the year of some dynamic and awesome educators and support personnel that make a huge difference uh, in the lives of students in the Brandywine School District. And this time, bringing it home will be Tally Middle School with Principal Jeff Lawson. May I please invite Teacher of the Year for Tally Middle School, Melody Strasowski, um, Educator Support Professional of the Year, Maisha Clay, if she is with us. Hopefully, the rain did not deter her. Um, and Jacqueline Kimball, Behavior Health Professional of the Year.
Good. Good evening, President Skorobot, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Hohler, members of the board and members of the Brandywine School District community. I would like to say thank you for giving the opportunity to present to you the Tally Middle School Award winners for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you the Tally Middle School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Melody Strasowski. Ms. Strasowski, or known to the students as Ms. S., serves as an eighth grade special education consultative teacher at Tally. While her title is teacher, Ms. S. serves at Tally as both the MTSS Tier One Leader and School Climate Committee Chair. Under Ms. Strasowski's guidance, Tally Middle School has continued to win multiple Delaware Positive Behavioral Support Recognition Awards, spanning from Phase One to Phase Three. Ms. S. has also led the charge in implementing the LEAD Block at Tally Middle School. This bi-weekly class block that was created for all students using avid practices and strategies in order to assist their academic and SEL progress. By using her expertise, Ms. S. has also led seventy-eight percent of our eighth grade special education students to meet their NWEA MAP growth goals in reading and math this year. In a time of need last year, Ms. S. stepped up and led an entire math course as the lead teacher in order to not only meet the needs of all students, but to also assist a staff member that was in need. Ms. S. is a selfless educator who prides herself on meeting the needs of her caseload students and forming productive relationships with all families. Recently, on Facebook, a parent simply wrote this about Ms. S. "You absolutely deserve every gift, as you have given our boy the greatest forever gift of education. I appreciate you believing in him and encouraging him in any and every way. We are forever grateful for you and thank you from the bottom of our hearts." When asked to describe Ms. S. in one word, her coworkers use the following: kind, thoughtful, knowledgeable, appreciative, welcoming, caring, and the list goes on and on. Ms. S., on behalf of the Tally community, I want to say thank you. Thank you for being you. Thank you for being dedicated to our students. Thank you for guiding parents through some of the toughest years of their educational careers. Thank you for being a Tally Tiger and thank you for representing Tally as the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Teacher of the Year. I know Ms. Keisha is not here, but she may be watching, so I will go through hers as well. I'd like to introduce Tally Middle School's Educator Support Professional of the Year, Maisha Clay. Maisha Clay, or as the students call her, Ms. Keisha, is a member of the Transportation Department in the Brandywine School District. While she is employed by BSD, we love to say that she is, in fact, Tally's driver. During my tenure at Tally Middle School, Ms. Keisha has been a staple in our Tally community. While speaking with students, they see Ms. Keisha as not only someone who gets them to and from school safely, but also as a mentor and, most importantly, a mother figure. While Ms. Keisha drives the AM and PM runs for Tally, she also runs the after-school bus, which is where her personality truly shines through. Ms. Keisha is constantly checking on her riders, asking questions about their days and even going out of her way to make sure that students get to the necessary stops to keep them safe in the evening hours. While the after-school bus run leaves around four forty-five, Ms. Keisha will often stay an extra ten minutes or so. This may require an order of hot wings from the admin team for lunch the next day, but we truly miss Ke- we truly appreciate Ms. Keisha doing what she needs to do to make sure the kids get home safely. Ms. Keisha, I want to personally say thank you as well. When I first met you, you were a Tally parent. I had the pleasure and honor of working with all of your children through their middle school years and watching you be a constant support system to them in the Brandywine School District. While this award is a small token of our appreciation of you, we hope you know the impact that you have made and will continue to make on our Tally community for years to come. On behalf of the Tally staff and students, congratulations on being named the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Educator Support Professional of the Year. Next, but not least, last but not least, I would like to introduce the Tally Middle School Behavioral Health Professional of the Year, Jackie Kimball, also known as Nurse Jackie, or better known as a hero. Nurse Jackie joined us at Tally four years ago and was met with smiles from students and staff as well as the global pandemic. Nurse Jackie took this challenge in stride and was instrumental in ensuring the safety of nearly nine hundred people each day. Nurse Jackie follows Tally's mission and truly knows every student by name and need, whether it be personal or medical. To put Nurse Jackie's work lived in perspective, over a hundred and eighty days of school this year, she had seven thousand six hundred and eighty school student visits and fifty-eight staff visits. Nurse Jackie approached each visit with the patience and respect of a true professional. On top of managing the health needs of an entire building, Nurse Jackie is a leader in the BSD Lifesavers Program. Due to her tireless efforts, Tally Middle School fielded over sixty applications and continues to be one of the highest attended program sites in the district. Earlier in this speech, I mentioned the word hero, and I quickly want to share a story to solidify that description of Jackie Kimball. A few months back, a student went to Nurse Jackie complaining of a sore throat and an upset stomach. While these sound like normal middle school nurse visits, something told Nurse Jackie that this was a little different. Nurse Jackie immediately contacted the student's mother and recommended a trip to AI DuPont Children's Hospital. After tests were completed, it was determined that the student was fighting an aggressive form of B-cell lymphoma. In speaking with doctors a few weeks ago, they said that the prognosis is good due to the early detection by Jackie Kimball. Nurse Jackie, I know you do not like the spotlight, but you deserve to be honored for the amazing work you do each day and for being the here that you are and always will be. Not only are you Behavior Health Professional of the Year, but you are a true Tally lifesaver.
All right, next up, we'll hear a update on our summer two thousand twenty-three programming, uh, from Dr. Kutch and Dr. Warren.
Good evening again. So, uh, it's that time of year, and we wanted to have an opportunity to provide you information. If you have any questions, more than happy to ask them, uh, about our summer programming and all of the wonderful things that we have planned. It is packed. So as you can see, uh, under Summer Academy, we have the Elementary K One Summer Academy again, much like last year. Um, we have an eighth grade bridge program, which is a little different. We'll go in a little bit more detail tonight about that and why the change. We will also be providing, um, summer learning for our MML, MLL students, high school credit recovery, as we've done so in the past, and introducing summer reading, and also wanting to share some summer learning opportunities that we've shared with our buildings and families. There's Special Education, Nicole, joining me tonight. We'll be going into more detail about our entitlement programs, our extended school year, and then, of course, our wonderful camps that we'll be running again. So first up, Summer Academy. So our Summer Academy program does serve as K One students. You can see that right now we have three hundred and seventy signed up. This is throughout the district, located at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. You can see the dates there that runs for roughly a month, from the end of June to the end of July. The times from seven forty-five to eleven forty-five half-days for the K One programming that we offer. And then also Harlan Elementary and Maple Elementary are running their own, um, parallel programs specifically for their students with enrichment activities in addition to what has already been mentioned. Um, our K One, uh, Summer Academy will be utilizing a similar curriculum that we do do, that we do provide during the school year. There, but we will be placing more of an emphasis on math and the use of manipulatives and developing math concepts and providing time for students to participate in math talk. Also focusing on, um, phonics and phonemic awareness. And we have some fun, right? So we want to make sure kids are coming back day after day. I just want to read to you some of the fun things that we have in store. We have the Wilmington Police Department is coming out with their K-nine unit to, um, talk to the students. We have in-house field trips with Winifred coming out about Colonial Play, weekly themes for the month, morning songs, daily crafts focusing on small motor skills. And the Phillies actually donated jerseys and rally towels for us to use for incentives. So very exciting. And you can see also with Harlan Elementary, the choir school will be participating in their afternoon programming as well. This will occur Monday through Thursday, close July third and fourth. Our middle school programming has changed somewhat this year. Part of that has to do with taking a look at what we've been doing for the last several years and seeing that there's been a decline in enrollment. And so what we'd like to do instead is focus on the transitional year from eighth grade to ninth grade, where we can see some struggle spots in the data and really encourage kids to start thinking about that high school mindset. So it's a five-week program for rising freshmen. It's designed to guide students through academic review, especially in math, traditional, uh, transitional resources, peer support, as they think about that move from middle school to the academic rigors of high school. So some of the topics in addition to the academics are graduation requirements, extracurricular activities, and how to reach your high school goals and what might you be dreaming about beyond. Our credit recovery is much, we've run it much the same, using Apex uh, for students who may not, were not successful during the school year and passing some of their courses, providing another opportunity to help them, um, move along. Uh, you can see the total number of students, roughly sixty for the middle school program. Uh, high school students, it's listed as three hundred and fifty courses. That could be multiple, or a student taking multiple courses, but roughly that's how many courses that we run. Uh, this programming runs from Tuesday to Thursday.
All right, I'm gonna give a little update on special education. And just as a reminder, uh, there is eligibility criteria for participation in summer programming for special education. IEP teams make decisions about whether students qualify. And, uh, they first, uh, could qualify under an entitlement category if they have one of those identified classifications listed in the bullets there, then they automatically are eligible for, uh, twelve-month programming and can participate, uh, in full-day programming where they will get all of the services and supports within their IEP uh, as well as other activities, uh, throughout the summer. We also try to make it fun for them. Students who are in entitlement, uh, have access, if they're in elementary school or a secondary school, for, for swimming, and we hire lifeguards, and so they do have, uh, other opportunities. And again, entitlement is full-day programming where they will have their IEPs implemented, uh, fully. And then Extended School Year is based off of IEP team decisions, uh, surrounding the bulleted points there. If students', uh, skills will be significantly jeopardized without services in the summer, then they can receive select services identified through the IEP, and they have discussions around whether, uh, the student will regress so much over the summer that it would take a long time to recoup those skills, so we need those continued services. If they have vocational skills that also require that level of service or they would regress, a degree of impairment has to do with the, the impact of the disability and, um, the, the rate of progress and their need for continued services. If students have breakthrough skills, we don't want to just stop that progress in, at the end of the school year, so the opportunity for continuing there. And in some rare cases, extenuating circumstances could qualify students. We do offer half-day programming for our students who qualify for extended school year unless the team decides otherwise because of their degree of impairment, and they receive the services that the IEP team delineated, but we also provide additional academic services and supports, um, for students in that programming. Excellent. So we'll start with our preschool programming. Uh, we do have students who, uh, receive services and are eligible for services at, at Bush this summer. Uh, we also have students who are eligible for continued services in the community and, um, their daycares, and some students that are just eligible for speech services. So you can see those numbers listed there at the top. Uh, these programs, um, for entitlement run June twenty-sixth to August, uh, third, which is about a six-week time period, and Extended School Year is five weeks. And so you see the times listed there. Um, we do have opportunities for students who are transitioning with, uh, play dates, as well as, uh, last year, we had a, um, program at our, in our ESY, or, well, at our ESY site who, um, were kids moving from Bush to, uh, you, to kindergarten the next year. And so we decided to bring them in and really focus on some of those learning how to do school, hoping that their transition to kindergarten would be a bit more successful. So we are doing that again, um, this summer. Next slide. Um, we have our, uh, programming for ESY entitlement at the elementary school. We have about a hundred and one students eligible for ESY at elementary and two hundred and twelve for entitlement. We are up a little bit from where we were last year with those numbers. Uh, but, uh, our entitlement is at Claymont Elementary School, where it always is because of access to the pool. And, uh, you see, our times are the same. Again, this is a Monday through Thursday program as well, with July third and fourth off. And then Extended School Year, students will be attending Mount Pleasant Elementary School, where the Summer Academy students are also attending, uh, for those same hours. And then we do have select students, as I mentioned, because of the degree of impairment, might be attending, uh, Claymont Full Day for ESY purposes. Next slide. At the middle, uh, in high school, uh, we again have about a similar, uh, number of students as we do at the elementary location, uh, this summer. Uh, all of our programming for secondary is at PF DuPont Middle School. And again, the difference between entitlement being six weeks and- And again, the difference between entitlement being six weeks and extended school year being five weeks. Next slide. Last but not least, we have site. We have an increase in the number of students who are participating in site programming this summer. They will also continue with services related to their IEPs, but work-based learning experiences. We have students from the site program who are also doing paid opportunities with our summer programming to be supports to our students at the elementary school level. So we're excited about that, but they will continue with their work-based experiences and go for full day at site. Next slide. And then I just put this up here to let everyone know that these times are summarized on our BSD website. Under learning in BSD and summer learning opportunities. This one specifically outlines the special education program. We've also listed the phone numbers, which just a note are different than the regular school numbers. So if anybody needs to access the program during the summer, they would call those numbers that are listed on the website. Next slide.
But that's not all. We have learning and activities going on all summer long. Right here, we're highlighting our camps. If you could click, those are hyperlinked, each one of those. Just to show you an example of some of our offerings that we have for our summer fine arts. Music, as you can see, their jazz ensemble, even beginning fiddle music. And it's like, it's full steel drums, gotta be jazz. We have musical theater, which is very popular. We're running it twice. Drawing, painting, multimedia art, and this is our handout for what was being offered this year. You see our STEM camps. We do have elementary STEM camp, middle school engineering camp, and our PEX camp, which is our physics, engineering, computer science camp. And just to highlight that, we do target females for that particular camp, but we're all-inclusive. Because we would like to provide an opportunity for our males and females working together in different dynamics within group settings to build confidence for all. So those are our camps. We are, you can go to the next slide, please. Great. We're also making sure that families are aware of all of the summer learning opportunities that we provide in our school districts. So as you saw on the previous slide, those are typically things that there may be registration, signups and the like. But at home, families can also partake in these learning opportunities. You can see in the flyer on the left-hand side, everything that is accessible, whether it's online, also in-person examples and suggestions. And our, on the right side, our elementary reading program, similar to if you think about our county libraries and what they offer. Student reads a minimum of 100 minutes each week. They're entered into drawings for prizes as an incentive. Next slide. And all of this is also posted on the website and our schools websites, and we have sent this information home to families. We also have secondary opportunities, much like our elementary on the left-hand side again. Reminders for parents and what students have access to all summer long. But then also incentives to keep students reading, right? So even at the secondary level, providing ideas and opportunities as well. We also have immersion opportunities for our students. So they know what resources that they have available from K all the way to seventh grade. This would include apps, websites and day trips. And so that has been communicated to families within the immersion programs. Thank you. It is very busy this summer. Things do not stop when student hits. It picks right back up again. So any questions? Yes?
You had a slide about the bridge program first, eighth grade going into high school. I have two questions. One is have you considered a bridge program for elementary to middle school? And then the other question is what incentives are there for those 60 students to complete the program? Other than obvious adult, you know, we understand that they're going to learn and be more successful in high school. But what are the students, what are their incentives to be there?
Do you mean to keep coming back day after day or?
What's going to encourage them and motivate them to be there?
So for that, so to answer your other question, we have, we're not running anything like that this year in term, but we are looking at that transition between fifth and sixth grade. So that aside, for the transition from eighth to ninth grade, it was an interesting thing. We saw our attendance really drop off last year. It was a struggle for the middle school program, the way that we were running it for grades six and seven. And so looking at the data, we saw that eighth grade was truly a struggle point at the time. And when we reached out to families, we actually did interviews to find out like, what was it? Was to try to determine what was the barrier? Was it, we provided transportation, was it time? What, what was that? And a lot of it had to do with it feeling like just summer school, right? That, that feeling. And so in taking a look at what would bring them back day after day, it was the idea of thinking about themselves as a high school kid, right? It wasn't like, ah, remedial eighth grade, this stuff all over again. It was more of, how can I better get ready for high school? And that was something that really motivated the families. So if it was something like, hey, get out of bed, you know, you need, it was the parents feeling like that would be the impetus to, to have them get up and go. And that they could be part of that to get them there. And so it's not just about academics for that program. So while we will focus on things like algebraic thinking and the like, it was more of what does high school mean now? And what do I have to do to be better prepared for the rigors of high school? So I think, you know, I don't have exactly an answer or maybe the answer that you're looking for. But I think the idea of being a high school student and being successful in high school versus maybe not so successful in middle school would be that incentive. That they're getting that right out of the gate. So they're making connections already to their counselors. The counselors are going to be coming in and meeting with them. There's going to be high school students who are going to be coming in. And so there's a mentor right away that they're going to make that link to. So that first day right out of the gate, it may not be that worry of, oh my God, where am I going to sit for lunch? It could be like, oh, I already made a connection. I can find that buddy or that pal. I know the counselor already. I've already made a relationship. So I think that's the piece that will keep them going.
Thank you.
Sure.
One other observation, I noticed that the elementary school is meeting earlier versus, and then the high school is later. So I, I think that's nice to give the high school students a little bit extra hour to sleep in.
We, I have to give, we'll give, Nicole would agree, we'll give a shout out to our transportation department. Who works complete magic to make this happen with so many kids from throughout the entire district. And figuring out those bus routes and those times are so critical too. But you're right, right? Flipping it. Sure.
I'll just say good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Hohler with our district news and updates and superintendent's report.
President Scrooban, Vice President Heller, members of the board and audience members. Just a few short months ago, BSD received the coveted Best Communities for Music Education Award for the fourth consecutive year. And if you were lucky enough to catch one of our spring concerts, you know why. Brandywine has a long, proud tradition of placing an emphasis on the arts. Did you know that on average, there are more visual and performing arts events in Brandywine every year than there are school days? Amazing students, amazing talents and amazing educators. No wonder we're a best community for music education recipient again this year. Speaking of amazing talent, earlier this spring, I shared snippets of the school plays and musicals at our high schools and middle schools. Well, our elementary schools were not to be outdone. This photo is from Hanby Elementary's Character Matters performance last month. This slide shows Lombardi Elementary Theater Club, who chose to put on their rendition of Cinderella. While Maple Lane Elementary students put on another classic, Aladdin. Mount Pleasant Elementary took a different road and decided to put on a talent show. And it was a hit among students and families, featuring a variety of acts ranging from singing and dancing to playing classical violin and the accordion. Brandywine Concord and Mount Pleasant High School student athletes shined this year in sportsmanship and performance. Several teams were flight champions in the Blue Hen Conference and dozens of BSD athletes were selected for the all-conference and all-state teams. This includes Concord's baseball, golf and girls lacrosse team, all going undefeated in conference play this spring. And you may not know this, but Concord High School has a rowing club. This year, the lightweight boys doubles team placed second in the Philadelphia City Championships. Courtney McDermott from Mount Pleasant continued his dominance this spring in shot put and discus. Not only did he set new school records, but he also is the state champion for both of these field events. He placed 24th all-time in the state of Delaware for shot put. Ninth all-time in the state of Delaware for discus. And fifth among all US participants at the Penn Regays for discus. The Joint Student Council, JSC, extends a huge thank you for the support received to make the B+ Foundation fundraiser and Community Day a fantastic event. The JSC, in partnership with the B+ Foundation, donated over $10,000 to create awareness and provide financial support for families fighting childhood cancer. Chrissy Banas from the B+ Foundation shared the story of Andrew McDonough. A BSD student who fought courageously against cancer. And Chrissy also celebrated with our exceptional BSD Joint Student Council leaders. As they revealed the amount that the Brandywine School District community was able to raise. Despite the weather, over 200 people gathered and enjoyed the festivities of the BSD Fest on Saturday, May 13th. Which was a student-planned and student-led event. Families and students from schools within the district had the opportunity to laugh, play together, connect with others and enjoy the culminating ceremony. That featured Concord High School's very own splitting vision band. This year, Brandywine School District continued with a foreign exchange trip to Torgau, Germany. 20 students from Brandywine Concord and Mount Pleasant High left last week to experience new foods, friends and culture for 16 days. Students stay with their host family, attend school and go on field trips. Next fall, we will return the favor and invite the German students to come stay in Brandywine and enjoy school life here in America. Special thanks to Mount Pleasant High School's JROTC for causing all of us to remember and honor those members of the armed forces. Who made the ultimate sacrifice defending liberty so that we can enjoy the freedom we so often take for granted today. To our JROTC students, thank you for causing us to reflect on the real meaning of the day and for your current and future service to our country. Had the pleasure of reporting how well our Mount Pleasant High JROTC robotics team did for the past two years. Just on behalf of the district, I'd like to thank Colonel Montanez for his leadership and inspiring our cadets towards careers in the armed forces. We've also had several ribbon cutting ceremonies across the district in the month of May. Picture here is the new adaptive playground at Forewood Elementary School. This picture is of the new outdoor classroom at Lancashire, formerly unveiled in the month of May. And finally, students along with Principal Mike McDermott, Senator Laura Sturgeon, Representative Deff Heffernan and Representative Krista Griffith. Cutting the ribbon on Lombardi Elementary's new playground. The month of May was loaded with employee recognition events. Picture here is Andrea Doyle, a retiree from Mount Pleasant High School. Even in retirement, Andrea, as a former driver's ed teacher, still sees as the opportunity to educate on the importance of wearing the seatbelt. On behalf of the district, I'd like to again thank all of our retiring bus drivers, custodians, teachers, paraprofessionals, school nutrition workers, administrators. And support staff for their service to the children of the Brandywine School District. This used to be tradition years ago. Since COVID, we haven't really brought it back. But one school dipped their toes in the water this year. We hope to bring it back amongst all of our elementary schools next year. It's an opportunity for seniors, graduating seniors to return to their elementary schools. And here you see members of the class of 2023 returning to Carcroft Elementary School. And there's a student holding his 2016 yearbook from Carcroft Elementary. Students then get a chance to parade up and down the hallways and I know talking to Mr. Overly, it seems like just yesterday that these graduates were the ones standing in the hallways watching graduates from years ago walk through. So parents, as we've said many times, don't blink because before you know it, that little fourth grader will be walking across the stage. Speaking of stages, the month of May was also, I'm sorry, June was our high school graduation. Many tears have been shed over the past two weeks of school, but not all tears are bad. Last Sunday, we sent off our graduating seniors to their next stage in life. While we're still counting the millions of dollars this class has earned in college scholarship. We know that they are well-prepared for the challenges they'll need to be solved by the next generation. These seniors spent their last days celebrating and remembering their time together. In addition to studying for final exams, our seniors visited elementary schools, practiced for graduation, participated in senior award ceremonies and dressed up for prom. Thank you to all the staff from kindergarten, pre-kindergarten to 12th grade. Who played a role in helping each student graduate. Also like to take time just to thank all the senior parents who devoted hours to designing, building and cleaning up some elaborate after-school prom events. Seniors, we wish you the best and please remember to come back and visit. And with that, we'd like to share this year's graduation video. Enjoy.
In our most tender years of development, life threw a curveball, disrupting what we knew and forming our current ways of life. Every decision made and step taken in the past four years got us to where we are today. Every tear, every sleepless night, every Zoom call we fell asleep on, each moment of joy. each moment of joy and the hard work has all paid off.
We are a collection of passionate individuals with unique backgrounds and interests. We are the National Honor Societies, the Black Student Union, the Gay Straight Alliance, the Asian American Club. We are mentors and students and student council advocates speaking up for a better Concord. Together, we have demonstrated the power of collaboration, inclusivity, and empathy. We have proven that we can make the most of any situation, that we can find joy amidst chaos, and that there is not one reason to doubt us.
Whether we knew it or not, our time at Mount has been defined by the WE ARE acronym, accountable, respectful, and engaged. These are not mere words. They are principles that have shaped and prepared us to make a positive impact on our local and global communities.
When I reflect upon my educational journey within the Brandywine School District, I'm overwhelmed with a sense of appreciation for the many teachers who have led us to be here. These individuals have not only shared their knowledge with us, but they have also become true sources of inspiration and role models in our lives. Their influence has extended far beyond the confines of the classroom, instilling in us values like responsibility and integrity that will guide us for years to come. Thank you for your unyielding commitment to our growth, for believing in us when we sometimes doubted ourselves, and for being the extraordinary educators that you are.
While tonight is great, this is not our final finish line. The truth is, we have a lot more finishes to go. As we move on with our own journey and start our new course heading to the next finish line in our own lives, it's important for us to remember that true success is when we can influence those around us in a positive way.
As we part ways, let us remember we are equipped with the knowledge and the skills that will carry us through life's challenges, the compassion to courageously navigate the world, and the determination to make a positive difference.
Will the graduates of the class of 2023 please stand?
I congratulate you, the class of 2023. You may now turn your tassels from right to left.
It is with great pleasure that I say to you for one final time, class dismissed.
Mr. President, members of the board, as always, proud to be BSD.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just again, the quality of that video is unbelievable.
I know every year we say it, and in between the graduations, the board, you know, has a chance to, you know, gather in between the ceremonies in our little lounge, and we just talk about how graduation day is one of our favorite days throughout the year. We all get to witness a lot of great events throughout the district, and all are wonderful and positive on their own merits. But none of them hold a candle to graduation. It's for point in time, all the trials and tribulations of the year, anything, you know, bad that has happened, all of it is forgotten, and it's all about that one moment. And the students, you know, everything is just positive. Every single student is smiling as they walk across that stage, and they've accomplished a significant goal, and it's celebrated, and Mick Austin, you've done a great job again in capturing everything that, you know, we see on that day throughout the graduation. So thank you for the video, congratulations to our graduates, and, you know, much success in the future.
I also, Mr. Scrubot, want to add to Mick, I don't know if you realize it, but we were all there, and you captured emotion that we didn't even notice. And it just makes it that much, like, the emotion that you're able to capture through video is incredible, and you have an amazing gift. And I appreciate that you bring it to the district. But I also want to say that with regards to graduation, but thank you for doing that, and thank you for the district for, because those videos, families, my son graduated last year, we have that video forever that you created, and I'm very thankful to have that, and this is a gift that you're giving not only to the district to show off amazing graduation, but to the families of the district.
Here, here. That leads us in to our public comment segment. This is your time to be heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. This is not the forum to make personal attacks or allegations against individuals who are not here to defend them. We ask that our speakers and audience members be courteous and respectful to each other. We'll begin with our Zoom comments. Each speaker will have two minutes. Time will start when you begin speaking, and first, Zoom comment, I'll announce the speaker, first speaker, and then who's on deck, and I'll do that throughout, so the next speaker can be ready. Any speakers in the room, we have a microphone in the aisle. I'll do the same, announce a name, and then the next speaker on deck. So first off, we have on Zoom Max Weinberg with Jillian Mitchell on deck.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Weinberg. I'm the father of three district graduates. I'm here to celebrate with the district an important anniversary. Perhaps some of you may not have remembered it. Well, June 30th is the second anniversary of the General Assembly voting money for the New Bush School. You remember the New Bush School. That's the one that's critical for our children, the one we needed yesterday because the existing Bush School was so overcrowded. I don't remember how many times and in how many meetings I heard that mantra from the district's administration. Unfortunately, construction of it at the Brandywine Country Club site hasn't started yet. In fact, I understand that the parcel hasn't even been legally transferred to the district. In the meantime, the former Brandywood School site sits empty, ready and able to be used for the new school. Construction could have started there two years ago. In fact, it was the Brandywood site that the district specified in its Certificate of Necessity submissions to the State Department of Education. Take a look at these submissions for yourselves. I have copies if you need them. The Brandywood site is already owned by the district and previously had a school there. My kids went there. It also offers three ways of access, Namans Grub and Falk versus the Country Club's single access onto Shipley, a road that already has Springer Just Down permit. I suggest that the district rethink its plans for using the Country Club site, fulfill the promise that you made to the parents to provide timely services for their children by building at Brandywood rather than waiting and waiting and waiting for some unknown time at the Country Club. Don't let the preschool kids who thought that they were getting a new school graduate from high school before it's ready at the Country Club. Don't let the state money, which is, after all, our money, continue to sit idly while the kids lose the opportunities you said they needed and deserved. Don't send a message to the communities that you don't value its neediest children. Don't let this anniversary celebration be for naught. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Next up, we have Jillian Mitchell on Zoom, followed by May Wong here in the room.
Good evening, Brandywine Board and District leaders. My name is Jillian Mitchell, and I've been invested in the Brandywine School District as both a former student, current parent, and former employee of the district. The district has unfortunately recently declined, mostly in the climate and culture they afford to students, parents, and employees. While there are many examples of this decline, I'm here today to ask for a response from the board and district leaders on one specific climate and culture issue currently happening at some schools. This is the inequitable practices of incentivizing standardized assessments. For those of you who have not heard, schools were using the NWEI MAP Growth Assessment to bribe students to somehow perform better in order to gain prizes, such as pool parties, glow parties, bounce houses, soft pretzels, and more. This is an inequitable and unethical practice to have in our school communities. Almost immediately after map testing began, negative consequences to this practice became known, and yet school leaders did not make moves to make changes. With this practice, district and school leaders were increasing student school and test anxiety, where in some cases, students missed school, felt ill, or stressed about these tests for weeks. At Tally Middle School, students took the map test, and then were immediately told whether or not they could go outside to play, jump on moon bounces, and have soft pretzels, while other students had to sit indoors. However, if students cried enough, they were afforded the incentives as well. What are we doing to kids? Why are we concerned about this one assessment? No one can deny that it is only because this assessment is being used for teacher evaluation and school rank purposes. In my personal case, my son, who is a high-achieving gifted learner, learned through this practice that he isn't good enough to celebrate with his class and school community at a pool party. All over one rip point, points in which students and many teachers do not even understand how to quantify or communicate what a student should work on to gain that one point. What's more, the test was designed for 50% of students to be above the mean normative growth goal and 50% of students to be below. So schools implementing this plan were already ostracizing 50% of their student population. Even more, the standard error on these assessments admits that the
Regina Williams. You intending to speak together in two minutes, or would you like each like your own two minutes? Two minutes is one?
Yes. Good evening, members of the school board. My name is May Wong, and I'm here with Reyna Wall Williams regarding an encounter that we had with our former principal, Ms. Kiri Calderon-Lacy. Both of us were wrongly accused of stealing at some capacity, and when told to meet, were handed off to discuss this issue with Mr. Keith Rolfe. Before this, however, Principal Lacy made it quite clear to me and my family that she didn't have the time to speak with us, as well as doubling down on her accusation and telling me that the video evidence that they had was very incriminating. Only after several emails from my grandpa to you and her was I given an apology, and Reyna has yet to receive one.
As now an alumni of Mount Pleasant, over the past four years, I've observed very unprofessional behavior from Ms. Principal Lacy that is almost equivalent to schoolyard bully behavior. It's heavily discussed that most of our teachers that left early in the school year were due to disputes with administration. Has been observed that on personal accounts, Principal Lacy has made posts on social media regarding staff and former staff. For lack of better phrases, she abuses her power. I've had many personal run-ins with Ms. Lacy. As class president of 2023, I was having a conversation with her about
I'm afraid we're, a lot of hearsay here is really not the forum. If you have, if I've not heard from you, you would like to send us an email. We can look into a matter. Ms. Wong, I believe, you know, your situation was resolved, but it's really not appropriate to, you know, levy these type of accusations against an individual that's not here to, you know, defend or make their point. So we would be happy to speak with you on this matter, you know, through the district office or through the board.
I know my mom has put in a report on the same behalf because me and May were both accused at the same time, but they followed up with her, but never me.
All right, I'll see if we can locate, if not, if you could contact me directly, I assure you, we will follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have TC Hill with James Metzger on deck. TC Hill, Mr. Metzger, you're on deck, you're next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening. In the same innumerable style that my former principal used to say, I am the proud teacher, science teacher, track and field coach, cross-country coach, and equity champion for Springer Middle School. I'm here before you to discuss what I believe is unethical hiring slash compensation practice for cross-country coaches at Springer Middle School. I received a letter dated September 1st, 2021, contain an EPR offer for a head and assistant cross-country coach. In other words, I was being offered two positions since I was the only person who was going to coach the team. I received a EPR letter at the end of the season, the season that ended, stating that I had been chosen to be the interim mural advisor for cross-country. In September 2022 of this school year, I recruited my colleague to assist me, Sarah Gramlich, as a cross-country coach, and she was hired as a cross-country coach. Coach Gramlich and I coached Monday through Friday, excluding Tuesdays, through the faculty slash staff meetings. We coached Springer's team through five regular season meets and a championship meet held at Mount Pleasant's High School. Coach Gramlich and I were informed that we were not being compensated as coaches as initially was understood, but as club advisors. We attempted to resolve this via the BEA, but they indicated that their hands were tied. We attempted to resolve this with the Springer administration, but the school was undergoing a leadership change. Mrs. McIntyre today held a Zoom meeting with Coach Gramlich, but I was excluded from the meeting. I have a screenshot from the Springer website that to this very day includes cross-country on the Springer Middle School's sports page.
I'm afraid we're out of time.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Metzger?
Good evening to the board. My name is James Metzger. I'm a resident of the district for the last fifty-some odd years, and I live on Baldwin Lane, which is near Carcroft Elementary School. A while back, they installed some reddish lights at the back of their building because they were having problems with vandalism on their new playground and around the school. Well, not only did the red lights light up the playground and protect it, it also spread light throughout the neighborhood. And I live across the street, about a block away, half a block away, and I had to put up darkening blinds in my guest bedroom because the guests were complaining it's more like taking an afternoon nap than trying to get a nighttime sleep. It was so bright in that room. So I've talked with the principal of the school since this has happened, and he has been working on it, but nothing seems to be done. And in the fifty years I've been there, they've always had white lights up there, which have not been a problem. But to switch to red lights has caused a real problem. And I think if they go back to using the white lights, flood-type lights, the new LED directed type light over the playground and so on, that that should correct the problem and not cause pollution, light pollution in the regular part of the neighborhood. In preparing for this talk, I also found out that the lighting may be in violation and not conforming to county code. And I've given the code references to the principal as well as to the recording secretary for your review. But it seems rather critical that the light is going outside where it's supposed to, and it hasn't helped very much with the
I'm afraid we're out of time, Mr. Metzger.
vandalism.
We will, I'll get in touch with our facilities director and see what we can do to address the issue. We'll have your contact information.
If they go back to white lights, it should be fine.
Understood. And Mr. Hill, yours is a personnel issue. I'll make sure someone follows up with you as well. And that concludes our public comment segment for this evening. Leads us into board member liaison reports. The SBA Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman.
The DSBA Executive Board met on June 7th. We did have a quorum. At that meeting, we did vote for our new executive director, Mr. Dave Hull, who has been previously the vice president, I'm sorry, the treasurer for DSBA as well as the legislative chair. He's also representative of the organization at the national level at NSBA Delegate Assembly. We also voted on officers for this year. We had obviously another opening since we now no longer had a legislative chair or a treasurer. So Jessica Marinelli from Caesar Rodney and Matt Rupert from Milford is our legislative chair. Jessica is our treasurer. And that was the meeting. Our next meeting will be at Mr. Marinucci's farm on August 3rd. Oh, yeah, August 5th, I'm sorry, Saturday, August 5th. From 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., it will also be a retirement celebration for Dr. Marinucci.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Ms. Gordon, DSBA Legislative Committee update?
DSBA Legislative
DSB Legislative Committee met on May 31st, and the minutes of the meeting were shared with the board immediately afterward. All House bills previously were reviewed and were supported. No new Senate bills were even considered. Beside the current DSB Legislative Committee Chair was not being reelected, nominations have been received for the chair position. Mr. Matt Butcher from Milford has previously been placed in the nomination, and there were no additional persons to be tendered by the Legislative Committee. The next Legislative Committee meeting is scheduled for October 4th, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. District Finance Committee met on Thursday, June 8th, where we discussed the May Monthly Financial Report, which Ms. Florrie will discuss later in our next meeting, I believe. I have the date written down. 10th, July 10th, and that will get us in before the July Board meeting. Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller?
So we met on May 18th. Just a couple of highlights. There was a long discussion on the neurocognitive testing for student athletes, pre-concussion testing, essentially in some data that questions the validity of those tests and if it's being used properly or even being used at all, even if we suspected concussion later. After a long discussion, the end result was the committee decided to discontinue that pre-concussion testing. That led into a very long discussion on EKG testing for student athletes to identify life threats that impact student athletes and lead to sudden cardiac death, and that's going to be continued to be explored over the next several meetings. And then the other one I wanted to, actually two more I wanted to highlight, is that the BSD Lifesavers Program did come to an end for this school year, very successful with forty-seven students participating from all of the schools. And then the one I wanted to talk about just briefly is that the Department of Public Health has not increased funding for the school-based health centers in an extremely long time. As a result, Christiana Care has decided to make cuts to keep them affordable. So based on usage data, those cuts are being made at Brandywine and Concord, essentially reducing the nurse practitioner hours by fifty percent at each of those schools. So Concord and Brandywine will share a single nurse practitioner. They'll spend two days at one school, three days at the other, and then it'll flip for the following week. So each will get fifty percent coverage. And then the nurse practitioner at Mount Pleasant hours will be reduced as well, but not by fifty percent. They're also cutting all the administrative assistant positions totally by September. And the one area that there will not be cuts are the behavior, health therapists, and social workers, although there is some question about how they're going to still be able to see students because their policy is that the nurse practitioner has to be on site for them to see students. So even though they'll physically be here, they might be prohibited from seeing students for fifty percent of the time.
And these are employees of Christiana Healthcare. These are not district employees.
Yes, and our understanding is that, yeah, directly due to the, to the funding from DPH not keeping up with the costs of providing the student health centers.
And is the EKG stuff for student athletes, is DIA, DIAA tackling any of that? Or is that on?
That was one of the to-do items coming out of this last meeting, was to make contact with them and have that discussion.
Fantastic. Uh, thank you. Meetings Advisory Committee. We've not met since the last meeting, since the last board meeting, but our next scheduled meeting is for June 20th at Lancashire. Parent Council for Students with Disabilities, Ms. Pidgen? Wilmington Learning Collaborative, Reverend Perry?
Good evening. Last month, I reported that the WLC was laser-focused on identifying and finalizing our search for an executive director. Since then, we narrowed the candidate pool from ten to six, held interviews with the six candidates, and from those six interviews, we selected two as our finalists, Dr. Ed Ryan and Dr. Laura Burgos. Last week, we were notified by our project manager that due to personal reasons, Dr. Ed Ryan withdrew his name from consideration. Both Dr. Laura Burgos and Dr. Ed Ryan were the only two candidates who received the unanimous votes from the WLC council regarding their path forward. It is for that reason that the council unanimously voted not to add any additional candidates and move forward with Dr. Laura Burgos as the finalist. Dr. Burgos will be available for the stakeholders' meet and greet tomorrow, Tuesday, June 13th at 10:00 a.m. at the Team Warehouse. The address is 1121 Thatcher Street in Wilmington, as well as the Community Town Hall at Warner Elementary School, 801 West 18th Street in Wilmington. The town hall will be streamed via Facebook, and you may also submit questions ahead of time via that same vehicle. As a body, we will reconvene this Thursday, June 15th, 6:00 p.m. at Harlan Elementary School, 3601 Jefferson Street in Wilmington, where we will vote on the ED candidate and our path forward. Special thanks to council members, Alethea Smith Tucker, Superintendent Starell Green, Lynn Kohler, and Dan Shelton, Parent Representatives, Star Wilson and Jenny Yao, our partnering project managers, Malik Stewart, Rochelle Davis of Empire Schools, and Dr. Shelley Rowser of Delaware State University for spearheading a thorough process. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Reverend Perry. Mr. Kohler, if we could make sure, if it's not already on our webpage calendar, if we could put the information and a link to the town hall for Tuesday, 6:00 p.m., that'd be great. And I encourage all our listeners and those in the room to check that out, to meet the new executive director. Ninety-one seven WMPH. Earlier, we had the recognition of Veronica Khan, who won first place in the Radio Prepared Report. And then we also had a third-place winner, Gemma Calabria, for the radio, TV interviewer, talk show category, and Senior Brendan Smith with an honorable mention for his newscast. And also in the superintendent's report, you might have noticed that WMPH students were broadcasting a baseball game between Brandywine and Mount live from the Fraly Stadium, home of the Wilmington Blue Rocks. We have not had a meeting since our last board meeting, and I do not have a date for our next meeting, but we are likely to have one over the summer, which I will report at our July meeting. Any additional board member reports or comments? Right, hearing none. Thank you, board members, for your reports. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, Ms. Gordon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
Second.
Motion, Ms. Pidgen, second, Mr. Ackerman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept student matters as discussed in executive session?
Second.
Have motion, Reverend Perry, second, Mr. Ackerman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. Motion is carried. No old business this evening, under new business, social media litigation?
Members of the board, the last two Friday packets, I've included information regarding a social media litigation suit that districts across the United States are eligible to join in on. This is similar to the suit that we participated in against the Jewel Company, the producer of vape products. These lawsuits seek damages against students by large-scale companies. I have reviewed the information. I have shared it with legal counsel, who has approved the district's participation with some modifications of the memorandum of understanding agreement. And I seek permission to move forward in working with our legal counsel to work on that memoration, memorandum of agreement document and to submit on behalf of the Brandywine School District.
Do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move forward in developing an MOU for the social media litigation?
So moved.
Have motion, Ms. Stock, second, Reverend Perry. Any discussion?
Will the MOU come back to the board for final approval?
It can, sure.
I think it should, because we're basically voting for something. We don't really know what it is, other than the fact that we're joining a lawsuit, which at some point, these class action suits are becoming as concerning as some due process claims are, I think. You know, the lawyers make a lot of money. The district gets a couple pennies. So just putting that out there, if something else comes down the pipe. I mean, they figured out, it started with the Jewel. Okay, I understand that. Social media, meh. We'll see what they can prove in court. But at the end of the day, I think if we didn't join, we'd get nothing. So we probably should, just to get something. But at the same time, you know, it's reaching a point of, like, everything is being sued about everything. Nobody seems to accept anything anymore. Just putting that out there.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we- Is there anything to present on item B before we take a motion? I don't think so. Do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to accept a contract extension between the Brandywine School District Board of Education and the Brandywine Education Association affiliate of DSEA/NEA?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Heller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ackerman, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C. Ms. Florrie, the May 31st Monthly Financial Report?
Good evening, Mr. President. Can you hear him? Can you hear him? Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and our small audience. For the May Financial Report, as the president noted, we reviewed it in length at our Finance Committee meeting. And the Finance Committee, Mr. Hanby asked me to relay that I hadn't been doing that, that the Finance Committee voted and approved the monthly financial report. The, coming into June, obviously, this is when the rubber hits the road and we kind of see where we are with one month left. There's not a lot of revenues left to receive because we have a delinquency built into the revenue forecast. We're actually at over a hundred percent of estimated revenues received for local funds. That's a hundred, a hundred point nine percent. The state fund revenues received are ninety-four point eight. The difference being that there are still, there are three pays in June, and so they haven't transferred the final funds for those three pays in June. But that will also be at or above a hundred percent for state revenues received, similar for tuition funds and other local funds. So ahead of what the target would be. On the expenditure side, there are a few negatives to report. We talked last month about operations utilities being over. At this month's Finance Committee, we looked in more detail and still have some more digging to do in terms of, is that natural gas? Is that electric? That would be one more where you can see the yellows. There should be another page. Yep, the one right before, thank you. And there are two back-to-back, operations, utilities, and transportation. On transportation, that is a negative. However, our revenues are ahead. We don't get additional funds on the energy side, so that is something that is built into the budget and won't change coming into June 30th. We're still only at eighty-four point two eight percent expended. So even though our revenues are over budget, the good news is that the expenditures overall for the district are under. So even though we have those two overages in transportation and operations utilities, we're still going to come in under budget. In large part, that's because we have some budgets that we'll have, and I'll go through this next month, but we have some budgets that won't fully expend because we've been able to supplement our budget through the use of ESER funds. And that is obviously part of the long-term picture of why we need a referendum and why we're spending more than we're taking in. But that ESER kind of masks that or hides the overall picture of how much that is. The other one, that last yellow on the last page, is nutrition. And in working with the nutrition department, that's really a right sizing of the budget. In reviewing the finances, we also looked at this report last year, at this time last year, and the nutrition budget isn't reflecting the payments made from students and families. And so there's a part of it where the expenditures are reporting, but not all of the revenues. And so that'll be something that we look at very closely in kind of crafting the budget, but they do have a sufficient balance. In part, that's having a new CFO and kind of right sizing where everything was. But again, it's not a different story than it was last year. So the takeaway from this is that we're ahead on revenues and slightly under on expenses. And so for the cash flow, that last page, we're going to come in right now. The projection is just over nine million for an ending balance. The other pages, we review in detail, ESER 2, ESER 3, prior year expenditures. But then the final one is the cash flow and where that anticipated June 30th balance is going to be. And it's grown a little bit. And the conversation was, let's not have a false sense of security that that balance is, you know, is sufficient. It is sufficient, but it wouldn't be sufficient if we didn't have the ESER funds to help it. And the next year, we have those ESER funds as well, but after that, it's over. And so having that, it's why we've kind of said, let's have a soft landing rather than a cliff and do the planning. So at this month's meeting, we also reviewed a three-year forecast and how the use of ESER funds kind of affects what that potential ending balance is, as well as the under-budget areas contributes to the balance. But then, when the ESER funds are gone, it won't be there. And so that'll be part of our conversation in July as well.
So it's fair to say, when the last referendum that we, we told the public that it would be three years before we would come back to them. So through our awesome financial management, we stretched it out five-plus years. ESER has given us another six, maybe into that seventh year?
Correct. Um, yes, I can absolutely explain that. There's two pieces that we've been looking at very closely. One is homeless transportation. The increase over the last five years in just the amount of homeless transportation. Now, it has increased dramatically. And we do get state revenue. The state says there's a ninety-ten split. It's really not quite ninety-ten. It's, you know, it's more closer to seventy-thirty because their salary schedule is not our salary schedule. But there's been a significant increase in homeless transportation, as well as foster transportation. But there have been, there will be next year. But last year, there was a significant bus driver- will be next year, but last year, there was a significant bus driver salary increase, five dollars an hour for the Transportation Committee meets in Dover. And that's been a constant discussion point of how much are we paying drivers? How much can we offer because of the shortages and, and the need for drivers? So last year, there was a significant increase from the state side and significant revenues. And so in looking at the expenses last year, the, the expenses last year compared to this year aren't that dramatic of an increase. It's just the budget didn't catch up for it. And so that number is kind of chasing a number that was already too low. But because we received the additional homeless as a net, even though this is a negative number against the budget, it's not necessarily a negative number against the bottom line because we received that additional homeless from, from the state as well as the additional, we talked as part of the budget, a lot of what I did in December was looking at units, right? We have all these new units, and how does that impact? But similarly, on the transportation side, because of the additional state salaries, we do have additional revenue, and we're not having to bear that negative through local funds.
It's a negative.
Yes. Yes. Yes, as well as our own drivers. But, but yes, the homeless piece is that
Any additional comments or questions? I will take a motion to accept the May 31st, 2023 monthly financial report, subject to audit.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Ms. Stock, second, Ms. Gordon. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Floria. General information and meeting dates are, we have a special board meeting, July 11th at Mount Pleasant Elementary School in the multipurpose room, followed by our regular board meeting, July 17th, board retreat, July 26th, and our August board meeting, August With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, Ms. Stock, second, Reverend Perry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time, attention, and attendance this evening. Have a great week.